Good evening, everybody. We're gonna go ahead and start the meeting at 6:31. Sorry for starting a minute late. We're gonna start by, the flag is over there, and saying the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, for joining us this evening. We have one small order of business, and then we will move on to our presentation tonight of the Students' Arts and Athletics. Due to James Summers' absence, I have to appoint Mike Whitney as secretary, and then he will take attendance.
President, Dr. Reese?
Present.
Vice President McDonough?
Here.
Secretary Summers out. Excused. Treasury Ensign?
Present.
Trustee Schultz?
Here.
Trustee Schaefer? Trustee Whitney, here.
Great. Item number two on the agenda is any changes to the board agenda? All right. Item number three, our school presentations. We're gonna start with high school. Students' Arts, Athletics, and Academics recognition.
Good evening. Thank you for coming, Ms. Oxford High School is first tonight because I have some students who need to get to an orchestra concert. So, we are so proud of our students, and we thank them on all of the work they have done outside of classroom and inside of the classroom. We want to thank our staff for working with these students, and also the families who have raised them. So, thank you so much. On behalf of our administrative team of Kurt News, and Kevin Downs, and Kristy Gibson-Marshall, and Toni Demar, I am thrilled to introduce you first to the most decorated athletes of the winter season. So, first, from girls wrestling, wrestling in general, but I'm gonna first honor the girls, ladies first, we have Cheyenne Frank, who is a sophomore, and J.J. Gonzalez, who is a senior. This year, Cheyenne battled tough. She wrestled in a lot of meets for her, and at the state tournament, she was runner-up. And she's got a lot ahead of her, right? Cheyenne excels in the classroom as well, and she is off to an orchestra concert soon as we shake hands. Cheyenne was also named Michigan Grabber Girls Dream Team Second Team this year. And J.J. Gonzalez is a senior. She just committed to Rochester University to be a student athlete there to wrestle for Mr. Maskell's son. And J.J. this year was sixth place at a great tournament, and we're super proud of our girls who represented us at the state tournament. This is Cheyenne, and this is J.J. The other part of our wrestling team, our young men. Senior Micah Roper is not able to be with us tonight. He is at wrestling practice, and he had a great tournament, ended up being runner-up in the state. And this is Luke Johnson. He is a junior. Luke and sophomore Gavin Lewis were both third in the state this year. They had great tournaments. And Micah and Luke were named to the Michigan Grabber Dream Team Third Team, and Gavin was named honorable mention. And these five wrestlers really led the program, led their room, and again, we're very proud of them. So, Micah is still making decisions for next year, but we still have more years for Gavin and of course Luke. Next up, we have representative voice for the dive team. Olin Charnserm is not here with us tonight, but Liam Pearson, one of our divers and co-captains, is here. So, Olin, we can talk about Olin even though he's not here. Olin won his first state championship last year. You met him around this time last year. And this season, he doubled that effort. So, Olin was a double state champ for us this year, representing us in the 100 free 100 back. And he was named to the Division One Dream Team in 100 back. Olin, his 100 back time is notable because it was the second fastest 100 back time ever swung in a state championship in the state of Michigan. But, and so, we are really, really excited about Olin's performance at the state championship. Next, we have Liam Pearson, another captain of our swim and dive team. Liam is a diver and has perfected his sport so much that he was fifth at the state meet this year. Had a really great final three dives, right? At the state tournament, he had to dive 11 dives, and he did great going in, and then nailed it, nailed each one of those three dives in the finals. Liam is headed off to Cleveland State in the fall, so he'll be representing us on the swim and dive team at Cleveland State. So, congratulations. Liam is one of our orchestra students, so he wanted me to make mention that he's not overdressed. He's just headed to orchestra right now. Next up, Sierra, Sierra's here. Sorry, Sierra is one of our all-state peers. Sorry, I didn't see you in the bathroom. But we have a combined team with Holly, and Sierra was our all-state athlete in skiing. She was the only Oxford representative to that high honor. I think Holly had one of them as well. But Sierra represents us. She travels around the nation skiing, and we're really proud of Sierra. She's a junior. Next, representing the arts, we have Tina, Leah, and Peyton. Come on up, ladies. So, these faces might be familiar to you. Their voices probably will be more familiar to you. But Tina is a junior, and she just received Division One ratings at the Theater Solo Ensemble, also the traditional solo ensemble, and also in the state. She just competed Mexican and received a Division One rating. It's the highest that you can get. So, she received Division One ratings in all three of those. She also, this is probably the most exciting thing for me this year, she is one of 10 finalists in the Italian Songs and Artists Vocal Competition for Michigan High School students. So, she's gonna compete on May 5th and represent us, and I know she'll do great. I've heard all of her Italian singing, and it's fabulous. So, you might be recognizing Tina because she was Madame de la Gombeuse at the New East, and did a great job, if you remember the wardrobe. This is, this is even better than this one. So, congratulations to you. And again, Tina is a junior. Next, I'm gonna talk about these two together. This is Leah Rao, and this is Peyton Brewer, and these two are always together. I don't know if I've ever seen either of them without the other. So, I'm gonna talk about you as a duo tonight. They're both seniors, and they've both been part of the dance program, the conservatory for four years of high school. This year, both of them have been doing independent studies where they lead and teach students in the other classes. They're choreographers, and they lead those other classmates. They've both been dancers in Newsies and Little Mermaid and Beauty and the Beast. Leah was Babette, or Babette, in SpongeBob SquarePants. And Peyton, you were a lot of things. You were a silly girl, a wolf, and an actor. So, very talented young ladies. Not surprisingly, these two seniors are gonna go off and study dance and college. Alma College for Leah, that'll be the first time that you separated, I believe. You're going to Alma, and Peyton, you're gonna go to Ma as part of an OSAT program, and then go to the larger university after that. So, they have been leaders in our arts program, and we're really proud of all three of these seniors. Thank you. And the board community, I just wanted to update you on Sean Wilson. I brought Sean to the board in December, and you met him. He was a finalist at that top semi-finalist for the National American Scholarship Corporation. And Sean, this year, we have, he has been, slumped as a winner of the $2,500 scholarship. He's going on to MIT, and will use that money well at MIT, so. Hi, Sean. I didn't even know he was here. He's supporting three other students. So, Sean is at MIT, and he got the scholarship. We're so proud.
I was kinda scared.
You weren't nervous, were you? Come on, let's shake hands. Thank you for recognizing our students at, yes, at Oxford High School. Go, she's, go, put me in picture.
One second, I'm sorry. Thank you. Bye, perfect. Thanks, guys.
Good evening, welcome. Thank you for being here to recognize all of the students in Oxford School of Olympic, and the recognition that they've gotten from their principals for their outstanding academics in athletics and in arts. I'm Praxeter Chris High School, I'm the principal, Mrs. Van Lysen, or Mrs. B is what most of the kids call me as, it's a long name. But I'd like to recognize one of my seniors, Evan LaRue, and Bishop Dismore, and I'd like to recognize them for their outstanding leadership on two very different ways of leadership. Evan is quiet, goes into class, does what he needs to do, does a good job, and is a great role model for other students. He knows what he wants to do when he graduates from high school. We researched different types of engineering, and he is looking forward to going to college in the fall. Bishop is very outgoing, talks to everybody, sometimes we have to be like, a little bit. However, he also goes into class, gets done what he needs to do, both of them big with grades. And Bishop has started our first advisory group, I guess I would say, the Bridges Advisory Group, because we are supposed to be moving in the fall, and there are some things that we would like to do with regards to activities, having equipment for the students to be able to go outside and play basketball, or baseball, or be in the gym, and have some mats for yoga or basketball hoops inside. So, Bishop has taken that on, and does meeting minutes, emails the superintendent, and has done a fantastic job on that. So, this is the first time we've done this at our high school. So, I'd like to thank both of you for what you've shown and what your teachers have left. I appreciate it.
Good evening. So, tonight, we're going to honor a few members of our wrestling team from Oxford Middle School, unfortunately, one of our members did not make it tonight. I'd like to hear from Shannon Johnson, who wrestled at her 120-pound weight class this season, and Austin Preston, who wrestled at her 144-pound weight class this season. So, before I go into the accomplishments that these two had on the mat this year, I really wanted to make note about the leadership on the Oxford Middle School wrestling team. So, I was just talking with Coach Barnes, they had a total of 69 wrestlers on the middle school team this year, which included six, seven, and eighth graders, and a lot of third those kids were brand new in the sport. So, to come to something like that that is highly intimidating, that team and that cohesion really rely on the leadership of students and wrestlers like these two individuals here that helped with the success of that group. So, most of them live with their accomplishments on the mat, but these two have been standing before you crowned as an Oakland County Wrestling Champion at the Oakland County Championships held in March. This is a tremendous honor. This achievement will be solidified by their name being etched on the Wrestling Champions Board in the Nova School Gym. We are so proud of these students and know their future is very bright. Congratulations.
So, good evening from Team Oba. I'm excited tonight to honor our students, but we especially want to take a moment and thank our parents and our mentorship teachers. It's definitely a team approach here at Oba. We have to have our parents heavily involved in our students' learning, so just wanted to give a shout-out to our parents and teachers that support these wonderful students. On behalf of Team Oba, Mrs. Rosick and Dr. Duff, I'm going to share a little bit about our students.
Good evening. My name is Trigiana Rosick. I'm the Assistant Principal for Secondary Instruction at Oxford Virtual Academy, and I am honored to present to you tonight two amazing secondary students from Oxford Virtual Academy, one high school student and one middle school student. Our high school student, Claire Baker, is in the ninth grade, and she has been with Oba since second grade. Her track record is legit academically, I checked out, A's and Bs, way to go. Claire, one of your teachers wanted to share a few words about how special you are. So, one of your teachers said, "Claire is an exceptionally amazing young person in two of my courses. Claire always turns and works of the highest caliber. She diligently takes notes throughout the course that enables her to consistently achieve high assessment scores." Additionally, Claire is a world traveler. She recently traveled, visited to Istanbul with her family. Claire was super responsible to make sure she was top with all of her work before her trip. Over a recent Zoom meeting, Claire was a great participant in additional learning information about one of her, when learning additional information about one of her assessments. Claire is a ray of sunshine to everyone she encounters. It is a pleasure and an honor to be her teacher. Congratulations, Claire.
Our middle school student this evening is a sixth grader. This is Trinity Mertz. Trinity is brand new to Oba, but she's doing amazing. A's and Bs this year, all A's and Bs. Trinity, one of your teachers wanted to share a few words about you. Your teacher said, "Trinity is a super intelligent, vivacious sixth grader at Oxford Virtual Academy. She works super hard to make sure she has solid grades, and always goes the extra miles to complete her schoolwork. Whenever Oba has an extracurricular activity, Trinity is in attendance to support her classmates and learn for herself. For example, Trinity loves attending Oba's first Monday Writing Club where she shares her talent as a budding author. Trinity is always appreciative of her parents and teachers' help. She often has a smile on her face and asks pointed questions about assignments or things that she wants to learn more about. It is a pleasure and an honor to be her teacher. Congratulations, Trinity."
Alright, so my name is Jordan Demus. I am the Assistant Principal of Elementary Instruction at Oxford Virtual Academy, and we are here tonight to honor the inaugural Oba Battle of the Books team, the Chapter Champs! This team of fantastic girls placed third with 61 points in the Battle of the Books hosted by Oxford Public Library. The Chapter Champs had to read five chapter books over a six-week span. They competed with other Oxford fourth graders at Oxford High School, testing their reading comprehension and memory of each book they read. Additionally, the Oba Chapter Champ won first place for Best Costume Award in the Battle of the Books. We have Alexander, who could not be here, Iris, who could not be here, but tonight, I have before you Georgia Akers and Ella McAllister. I expect to see these two on tour news in the near future. Congratulations to them.
Okay, good evening. My name is Stephanie Mimi, and I am the principal at Clear Lake Elementary, and tonight, I have the pleasure of introducing our large group, which is our Clear Lake Green Team. We have almost all members, and tonight, we're recognizing them for their accomplishments that they have done as a green team club. So, in the state of Michigan, we recognize schools as green schools, but did you know that there are three different levels? And so, as a Clear Lake team, they have achieved the highest level that you can get as a green school. We have achieved an evergreen status, which means that as a club, they have accomplished over 20 different activities in four different categories, and I'm very pleased to say that we are now getting this honor for the 17th consecutive year. So, this evening with us, I'm gonna read your names, and I'll have you step forward, and I'll give you your certificates when we exit, okay? So, tonight, we have Jessie Antonio, John Antonio, Quinn Palowski, Carolyn Gonzalez, Isabel Asturza, we have Evelyn Lundgren, who's at softball, it's her sister Tessa Lundgren. We have Claire Cross. We have Teddy Cross. This evening, a part of the team are Addison and Brianna Brennan. We have Emmett Johnson, with our club, Jacob Boozick, Levin Wallace, Braylon Engess, Maria Grayson-Lambert, Logan Morgan, and Kate Owen.
Alright, good evening. My name is Chad Boyd, and I'm the Principal at Daniel Oxford Elementary. This evening, I'm recognizing two students for taking action. Action in the IDPYP can be as simple as a student wanting to share with someone what they're learning, or continuing their learning themselves on a particular topic at the library. It can be an action like leaving a fundraiser, a story clause, creating a poster to educate others, or writing their congressman about an issue. Today, I'm recognizing two students who took action and were great examples of our learning profile and our portrait of a graduate. First, here we have Emma Delisle, who is a first grader at Daniel Oxford. Emma took action by using money she earned from the tooth fairy to buy her brother a birthday present. She also picked out a present for her teacher, Miss Luns. Emma truly represented our learning profile trait of being caring. Great job, Emma. Alright, and we also have Christian Crank, who is a second grader at Daniel Oxford Elementary. Christian was also a caring and principled student, who is a great example of demonstrating good sportsmanship. I really like this one, because I like the Red Wings. He went to a Red Wings game and sat next to some Boston Bruins fans. Christian was polite and remained humble even when the Red Wings won the game. Great job, Christian. Unfortunately, the Red Wings came up about one point short and didn't make the playoffs, but it was a good run, good run, sure.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Don Maskell, representing Lakeville, and with me tonight is Harden Rafer. He's one of our second graders here at Lakeville Elementary, and it's an honor to recognize him this evening. Miss Williams, so sorry that she's not able to be here in person, but she is taking care of her son who recently had major surgery, so please accept her apologies. Ladies and gentlemen of the Oxford School Board, and our other guests, you should know that Harden is a student who exemplifies our Lakeville mission statement. Each day, Harden works hard and strives to be principal. He comes to school every day with an amazing attitude. He truly cares for all he stays, that all stay safe, while he's helping others to do the same. He is truly joyful and arrives to school each day with a happy heart and a sincere smile on his face, just as he has right now. Thank you, Harden, for being amazing and living into our learning profile. By doing this, you share so much positive energy, and we are so grateful to work with you here at Lakeville. Thank you and congratulations as well to Harden's parents for raising such an amazing child. Let's give Harden a round of applause, too. Now, I'd like to introduce Mr. McDivitt.
Good evening. I'm Paul McDevitt. I'm the Principal of Leonard Elementary School, and today, I'm not gonna talk very much because I'm gonna give these guys a chance to address the board. I'm very proud of this group of students. This is our, I won't say it's our inaugural green team, but it's been many years since we had a green team at Leonard, and so, they brought it back, and it was a student-driven to do that. So, I'm gonna introduce Mrs. Benzman, who was our sponsor for our green team this year.
Greetings from the Leonard Elementary School Green Team. My name is Harrison Benzman. I am a kindergarten teacher at Leonard, started in 1999, and oversee our green team. Kennedy Beal and Andy Burgess are standing beside me along to continue to see all of the other members. So, let me first introduce those people right here. This team is here today because Kennedy asked if we could have a green team. She's in fourth grade. How could I say no? We meet twice monthly for our initiatives. We are small but mighty, with 15 of us in grades two through five. I am going to hand the mic over now to Kennedy.
We will receive our green school banner next month. It is being sent to us. Today, our team attended the Detroit Zero Ceremony, along with others from the tribe coming here. Earlier this school year, we met, discussed, and then agreed to submit 10 items, so let's receive our green school green banner. Here are just some of those items on the list.
We're cycling for new curators, implementing the school's energy-saving program, specific actions we have implemented in the school, number reminders, establish a Canadian natural Michigan garden project with native plants, establish a Canadian outdoor able habitat project, observe earth-lay-by participants on an earth day event in April, maintain and update a bulletin board or kiosk with information on environmental concerns from school staffs and addressing those concerns, and establish an equal program around media center.
And that is just a few other things, because we had to include 10 different items, but we just wanted to include some, some of the things that our little team has done.
Leonard Elementary's Green Team, thank you.
All right, good evening. My name is Jeff Brown and I'm the principal of Oxford Elementary School. As I was walking in, I was kind of thinking about my speech and it kind of jumped right out, that triangle that sits right there in front of the board that I think sometimes aren't granted. I've been here long enough now at this point that I was here when that triangle was created, and it's fun to see it live every day. That triangle has arts on it, athletics, and academics. And the gentlemen that are here to present to you tonight are here to represent the art side of things. As I learned, we were standing in line, they're also athletes. We had some good conversation about football on our way in as well. But the two young men that I am presenting tonight were part of our school play Beauty and the Beast, that I know they had so many performances. I'm sure everybody here had an opportunity to see it. But we appreciate them being a risk-taker, communicators, all of those skills that it takes to get up there on stage in front of such a big group. I also wanted to take a minute, because I saw Melissa Williams coming in, and over the years, we've had both Chase and Tyler, but it was about a decade ago, I think, that Melissa approached me when Chase wanted to be in the play. And so I think that Talon's older brother was actually our first elementary student to be in the play going back about a decade. And we were lucky enough this year to, I think, have about ten students from all of our elementary schools there. And it's been a really fun tradition that's been continuing now for about a decade. And so I'm pleased to introduce Max Wiggins and Talon Williams.
All right. That was, it's always my favorite meetings. All right, going back to the normal agenda, we have school presentations. We have an Oxford High School field trip presentation by Mrs. Debbie Brown.
Hi, everybody. Again, I'm Debbie Brown from the University of Kentucky, but I knew you do. Been here a long time, so I'm going to present a proposal for a trip to Tennessee with not only my improv communication and speech students, but also leadership and mentorship. So the reasons for the trip, as you can tell, a lot of students, even adults, we struggle with our soft skills. So this is a chance for us to really focus on those and improve them and come up with some new techniques and new activities and ways to learn how to improve ourselves. This is a unique opportunity. We purposely tried to plan a trip that wasn't one that everybody's been taking, or one that everybody's been on, or one that you've seen a million times before. So we're trying to offer new experiences by looking at mountains, waterfalls, and lots of activities. So, and of course, we want to have some fun. When I connect this to our multiple classrooms that will be going, the first and most important thing I can tell you is that I have taken several students to New York and Chicago to study at different programs and to learn about communication that way, study improv and different things. But in Tennessee, there's a place called the Comedy Garden, which is like the second city of Tennessee. So working with them, we will be their first school that they will welcome since COVID. And what I liked the most about their proposal is that they will work on our communication, our leadership skills, and creating connections. The best thing is they are going to work with all three of us teachers on what we feel we want our students to have. So they will look at our curriculum and they will design two workshops for our students to come down and take that will improve them and focus on a lot of what we're doing in our classroom as well, in the real world. Then they will create an entire performance for our students, where our students will get to see what they've learned and how to actually use it in real life. So other than that, we will look at soft skills, forms of communication, improving yourself, thinking on your feet. It's a chance to show students things that we're teaching them in new creative ways, as well as in the real world. Leadership, they are going to maybe go hiking in the mountains and on our waterfall tour. They are going to learn about group challenges. They are going to be leading each other, as well as learning about group roles. They are going to communicate as a team and set goals together for different challenges as we get on and off the bus to explore different items. We are planning to take about fifty students in five chaperones. We're looking for entertainment fun and we're looking to go in November because it would be between the seasons of fall and winter, so that our athletes don't get locked out. So our trip highlights, day number one, we leave OHS. We head down to Pigeon Forge. They are welcomed by attending the Pirates Voyage Dinner Show. And then we go back for the evening in our hotel there at the Country Keski's Waterpark Hotel. Day two, we wake up and this is where the excitement happens. We get to go on our bus tour and our off-site hiking and waterfall tour. We will see beautiful locations, and that's where we will be doing all of the team building and the leadership skills and the group roles and all of those things. We will also go sightseeing and shopping, it's our real addition, for fun, in Pigeon Forge and the Ethical Mill and the Danover. The Comedy Garden, that's the class I told you about previously, where we will help the students to find their voice and work on personal communication skills, how to improve themselves. That's big for all three classes, is becoming the better you, so that's something we want to celebrate with them. Day three, we decided to have a little bit of fun with the Madonna Wood. So, you know, that sounds like a good thing to do, find the music in the Smokies, what can be better. And then day four, it is our idea to have breakfast at the hotel, travel home. And on the way home, we want to create communication through challenging our students to either come up with a reflection journal or to create a podcast together with a couple of people on the bus. So a little bit of fun with that. We did go with three quotes, and as you can see on here, they got a little bit pricier as we went through the quotes, our, the Educational Traveler Ventures, they were not able to provide a bus. So the only option for them was we had to have fifty students and we had to fly. That's why that was the most expensive. But overall, all the quotes included six meals, three chaperone trips, and a similar itinerary along the way. So we are hoping to go with World Strides. And my reason is that World Strides obviously gave us that best price, where if we can provide fifty students, it's eight ninety-nine a student. As long as we have twenty-six, it's twelve fifty, but we're really hoping between the three classes to have that fifty pretty easily. And also, we are nearby the band on all of their trips, the Band Orchestra trip, so we know that they provide good care for our students. They are offering a full refund protection for all of our students, online fundraising. And they do have an on-call doctor, which I've been on several trips with kids. That would be a great thing to have, as well as we get a group leader that will be with our group the entirety of our trip. So they'll be with us the whole time, and they provide us the safety team for at the hotel in the evening, so our chaperones can rest and our students will be here for it. Thank you for your time and consideration. Any questions?
Thank you for coming.
Thank you so much.
And that's for November, so it's the fall, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Great. All right, items see on the agenda is Oxford Elementary School, Mr. Brown.
Travis Brown.
I'll take whatever I can get. All right, good evening. I'm holding a whole bunch of stuff up here. Need the microphone. So one, I apologize for my attire tonight, but I also addressed the parents. My goal is to be in Troy, Troy Athens, for our varsity girls' game tonight. So I know Mr. Boyd went as quickly as he could there, and so I'm sure I'll be getting text updates starting in a few minutes. But I still am excited to give you guys my very best with our board presentation. I wanted to start with some of the pictures that you can see there, because I think it's a pretty good summary of some of the cool things that we have going on at Oxford Elementary School. Up in the top left, that is a Bike to School Day, and that is from the fall. That's a combined event with Daniel Ashford. And it's just a reminder that we do have a section of schools, while I'm here, only represent one building. We really do serve quite a few families beyond just our OES walls. In the top middle, you see our security officer, and all the way on the right as well, a couple of staff members getting their head shaved. We do have a staff member who has encountered cancer this year. And several of us were willing to step up and have our head shaved this year, which was quite entertaining, an experience like no other that I've ever had before, to have thirty of my closest friends shave my head down. But we raised several thousand dollars and it was just, it was honestly, it was a lot of fun. And I think it speaks to the type of staff that we have. In the bottom left-hand corner, I know it's a little bit hard to see in the picture, but that is a picture from our junior first Lego League event that has kids on it from all over the district, but it's also a neat thing because it has some of our FLL students, it has our middle school team represented, and it has our high school robotics team represented. And it's just another one of those great examples of a community-wide piece that we're happy to be just a small part of. The center, you see the Winning Battle of the Books team from Oxford Elementary School this year. We've won two of the last three years, so I'll brag about that as much as I can. And in the bottom right, one of my favorite things that we do, that is Stella holding the winning yearbook cover that will be on the cover of this year's yearbook. And so the way that contest works is the staff chose the top ten yearbook covers, and then the students voted for the number one for those ten. And that's about a fifteen-year tradition that we've done at Oxford Elementary School. And it's really fun to go back and see those covers over the years. The other nine that were voted on will be inside the yearbook, but obviously we can only have one cover. So this is an example of some of the fun that we have going on on a daily basis before we get to the little bit more serious part of what we do at Oxford Elementary. So last year, when I came and visited you, we were talking about the initial launch of the PBIS program. And this year, a big part of it, I'm going to share, is kind of the phase two. And so I'm going to give you some updates on where we are with the PBIS program. And the second piece, you see our attendance plan is going to be a big focus for our building going into next year, so I'll explain a little bit more when we get there. So I know that you've heard the PBIS, you know, presentations here over the course of the year, but just a quick refresher. The number one thing that we do with PBIS is we teach. Kids feel the most comfortable when they know what expectations are. And so we're literally teaching, how do you walk in the hallway? What does the lunchroom look like? What does the classroom look like? Because when you know the expectations, it's much easier to mean those expectations. Our family-school liaison delivers second-step lessons, which encompasses our anti-poly curriculum. And so that's an important part of the PBIS program. At OES, our kids have chosen a school store is how they would like to be recognized. We have some children that are sitting on hundreds of dollars in pot bucks right now. I know that Mrs. Hart is probably getting nervous, too. Some of these kids are saving money. And we don't know if we're going to have enough stuff for them, and so we're doing our best to figure that out. And then there's other kids that are spenders, but if they've got a buck in their hand, they're getting the three tootsie rolls and they're spending on a Friday as quick as they possibly can. We also have monthly celebrations, where any student who has not had a major office referral gets to come down. We've done Christmas cookies. We've done a walk on the Polly on Trail. We try to do a variety of different activities to hit every type of learner. And a big part of this presentation tonight is going to be data. We typically have ten or less students that are missing one of these monthly celebrations. And so that means the flip side of that, we have about three hundred forty students that get to participate in these assemblies on a monthly basis. And another big part of PBIS is we reteach, because sometimes the first time didn't work. And so for those children that do miss the monthly celebration, part of that is a reteach that's geared toward the reason that they had to miss. So this is essentially a summary of your presentation from last year, and now we kind of move into where have we gone for this year. So tier two, we started with a check-in-checkout system. And I'm going to try to navigate here as best I can. And I know that this slide isn't perfect, but I really did want the board to be able to get a feel for what the check-in-checkout process really looks like. And so I know that you heard presentations along the way about the SABR's data and what do we do with that. One of the main things at OES that we use for the SABR's data is students who come out in the red area, which is the most concerning. Those students are automatically put into the check-in-checkout program. What happens for a check-in-checkout is students have two personalized goals. These are based on their need. We have a meeting with the teacher where these are discussed. We have parent approval for the child to be in the program and parent approval of the goals. Sometimes the goals are, I'll keep my hands and feet to myself during recess. Sometimes the goals are, I'll try my hardest in classwork. They're truly tailored individually to the student. And so when the child comes to begin their day at OES, the first thing that they do is they go see their trusted adult. That trusted adult has their check-in-checkout form with them that they're then taking with them over the course of the school day. That form is divided into all of their subject areas, including specials. And if appropriate, it could also be recess, even their second recesses, depending on what their goals are. The student then checks out with the adult at the end of each one of those classes and gets a score, a three, two, or one. And then at the end of the day, they have a point goal, and depending on where they are in the program, their point goal gets higher as they kind of gain some experience with it. And at the end of the day, they have the choice if they've met their goal between a piece of candy or a hot line. At the end of the day, they are also checking out with a trusted adult. The fun part is, they're starting their day with a hug, a high-five, a handshake, a hey, let's go, you can do this today. And at the end of the day, they're finishing with a quick reflection on how did they do over the course of that school day. Brand Overhold, our family-school liaison, meets with the kids every two to four weeks to review their bigger-picture progress. And at that same time, she's emailing the parents with how their child has been doing over the course of that duration. And so the point of this point chart is, what happens next? And so at the end of every four-week period when we're reviewing how the student is doing, three different things can happen. One, they can continue on the same path, so it's been working, but maybe they're not completely ready for graduation yet. The next option could be maybe it's not going so well. And then on top of the check-in-checkout, they need to, they need to meet with the family-school liaison for some extra teaching, some extra conversation. And the third option, the one that we're the most excited about, is when we have kids who are moving towards graduation. We have had several students graduate from the program this year. What graduation looks like is they sort of phase out. And so after having the teacher for the four-week period do the scoring, during the phase out, the students start scoring themselves, and then the teacher just looks at it at the end of the day. And so it's a little bit of a gradual release, instead of just all of a sudden you're on and then all of a sudden you're out. For the kids who graduate, they do a celebration with Ms. Overhold and we make them slushies or milkshakes. And for the kids who stay graduated and keep doing well, each month when we have those graduations, those graduates get to come back and be part of that celebration each month moving forward. So it's been a fun way to kind of recognize the kids, even once they've graduated. So this is an example of what one of the thing sheets actually looks like. Right where you can see that I'm principal, I'm carrying, and I'm a thinker, underneath there is where their individualized goals would go. I know this one is set up in three columns. We do try to keep it to two as often as possible. And you can see that three-two-one system. Brianna sets the goal at the bottom for the students. Those are individualized. And then at the end of each day, they restore the goal, yes or no. So the pause and reflect, excuse me, the check-in-checkout has been really effective. We've had over forty kids who have participated. It has been almost an equal number of girls and boys, slightly boy-heavy, but somewhere in the twenty-three to seventeen ratio. And so we have been keeping some data on what that's been looking like, and we are up to six graduates right now. So right now, I'm going to shift gears and do a second part of our PBIS tier two, which is our pause and reflect room. Dr. Markovich gave us the ability to have a behavior-support terror professional this year. Mrs. Hart came up with the wonderful acronym of pause and reflect. And so we've been using the pause and reflect room for this whole school year. So I don't need to read. I'll give you a second to take a peek at the slide. This is a teacher response to how has the program been working. Obviously, I would love it to say a hundred percent blue. But again, being transparent with data, this is the first year that we've given this survey. And so my hope is I'm standing in front of you next year with a higher percentage of people that are in blue, because of course, our goal is for every teacher to feel like their kids are getting the support they need. In the top left, it's a little bit hidden underneath the word grade. This is based on four hundred forty-six responses. And so you may wonder, where do these responses come from? I think we have Mrs. Prince in the office, or in the office. I think we have Mrs. Prince in the audience today. She is our adult that's in charge of the pause and reflect room. One of the things that Mrs. Galacki set up with her at the very beginning of the year was a Google form that she completes when a kid comes in. And so this four hundred forty-six represents all of the children that have used that room. And you can see it's a little bit third grade heavy, which makes sense, those are our students that are newest to the building. But Mrs. Prince has done a great job of giving us some of the data that we can present to you tonight. Four hundred forty-six kind of seems like a lot, but if you do the math, we've had about a hundred forty school days, so you divide that by the four forty-six. And so we are only talking about three or four kids each day. But over time, that gets you to a pretty big number of people that this has impacted over the course of the year. So here are some of the reasons that kids have come there. And what I'm most excited about is the second one down to complete classwork. That was never exactly the intent of the pause and reflect room, it was mostly to deal with behavior. But we have recognized that some behavior is not finishing that work in the classroom. And so Mrs. Prince does a really nice job of finding balance. So when an eight-year-old gets sent to her room, she often has to figure out why. And that's not always a completely easy thing to do, but she's done her best to break it down into why the kids are there. All right, so I'm shifting gears from tier two of PBIS to something that we've discovered over the course of the school year. And I do apologize for jumping around a little bit, but this is a really important learning that we've had over the course of this year. And so I'm going to give you the first slide. This is nationwide data and I cited the website where I grabbed this data from. I was shocked when I found this, but only thirty-seven percent of students nationwide have a ninety-five percent or better attendance rate. That is concerning, I don't know any other word to use than that. Former math teacher, and so if you can humor me with math, we've got a hundred eighty school days, ten percent of that is eighteen, so five percent of that is nine school days. We only have thirty-seven percent of kids nationwide that are missing less than nine school days in the school year. That to me is shocking, incredibly concerning. So let's take a look at our, get a little bit more local as we move forward. So this is attendance rates pre-COVID and post-COVID for the state of Michigan and for Oakland County. So again, you can see pre-COVID ninety-three, ninety-four, you can see roughly two percent drops as we move forward to where we are right now. And two percent, how big is that? Well, at Oxford Elementary, if you do a hundred eighty school days times three hundred fifty-five students, a two percent change in that number of days is pretty significant when you're putting that all together. And why are we looking at attendance? Because when the kids aren't there, they're not learning. The other complexity is for the kids who are there, if five, six, seven of their classmates aren't there that one day, it makes it difficult for the teacher to move forward. And so this problem not only affects the children that are not there, it can potentially have a negative impact in some ways on the kids who actually are there. I know that the board had the opportunity to see the presentation beforehand, so it kind of ruins my next question, what do you think this looks like for Oxford Elementary School? Because in my opinion, we have every reason in the world to think that our numbers would be worse than these. And I want to give credit to Christine and to Dr. Russell, who pulled this data for me, but this is the data for Oxford Elementary School. And so you can see, pre-COVID, Oxford Elementary School was sitting at almost a ninety-six percent attendance rate. If you allow me to slide back, that number exceeded both the state and the county, which is pretty fantastic. But the piece that was amazing to me is post-COVID, we're sitting at ninety-two point six percent, which again is exceeding both the state and the county. That number was slightly surprising to me, that's not what I would have predicted when I shared this information at a staff meeting, it's now the staff predicted when we're kind of walking through this. But there are some concerns on this slide that I want to make sure that the board is aware of. That number of fifteen students who are below ninety percent, so those are kids that are between the eighty and ninety percent. They haven't hit the threshold where we would traditionally be reporting it to a truancy officer, but they've hit the point where their attendance is affecting their academic learning. Back in twenty-eighteen, nineteen, that number was only fifteen. Mrs. Weiss, our secretary at the time, her and I could handle attendance letters when the number was fifteen. If you look right now to the number of students who are in that area, it currently sits at eighty-seven. That is a number that's bigger than what we can just handle with phone calls when those pieces happen. That is an incredibly concerning number to me. The other two numbers are obviously concerning with two students who are hitting that chronic attendance issue level and that number has risen to nine. Nine is still a number that we can manage, but eighty-seven is really pushing the boundaries of what we're able to do. So that leads us to now what with that attendance? So we've identified eighty-seven students who we have a pretty big attendance concern of. And the sad part is when you research this, you type into Google, elementary attendance programs. Well, whose fault is it when the kids ate that they're not there? And I guess it's not even fair to say one, who is in one person's fault, it's certainly more complicated than that. But it's not just the child's fault that they're not coming to school when they're eight, nine, and ten years old. There's all kinds of programs that are out there for older students, for secondary students. The accordion starts to look at the child as being the one, school incorrigibility, things like that starts to come into play. But we don't really feel that that's appropriate for my eight, nine, ten, and eleven-year-olds that are studying at Oxford Elementary School. But we noticed a really interesting thing when Dr. Russell pulled our attendance data. She also ran reports for me based on students who are getting intervention. Their attendance was actually better than our average. We also ran the report for students who are receiving special education services. Their attendance was actually better than their general ed student, not by a lot, a little bit better. The other group that we noticed whose attendance was better, completely unexpected, and Dr. Russell, I have to give full credit, ran this report for that category, not at my recommendation on our own. She ran our attendance for the students who are in the check-in checkout program. Their attendance was also bad. And so one of the ideas that we came up with for our attendance students for next year is we're going to involve them in the check-in checkout program. They're going to start their day meeting that trusted adult with a safe adult. They don't need the sheet to take around, they just need the hug, the handshake, the high five, the hello to start their day. And so that's one piece that we're going to add for sure. Piece number two, both Daniel Oxford and Oxford Elementary this year set a parent-involved goal. We've had so many parents in our buildings this year and it's been tremendous and it's felt honestly better than normal. We've had more parent volunteers in the building this year than in my fifteen years. That goal has been very successful. I've been working with the teachers and had some conversation with our union. What I'm going to ask next year, just like we were successful with the parent goal this year, is for an attendance goal for next year. And so when a child reaches five absences, our part-time office secretary is going to alert the teacher, the teacher is then going to be asked to make a direct contact with that family. A phone call or a letter, not an email, something that's handwritten, preferably a phone call. And when they make that phone call, they're going to ask two questions. We've noticed your child has been gone for five days, is there anything that we should know about? And question number two is how can we help you with attendance? That's all we're going to ask the teacher to do with that piece. We're also going to be, Ms. Overholt, family school liaison, and I, once those kids hit five, her and I are going to be writing a handwritten letter that'll be on their desk for the day that they come back. And so our hope is that by fostering more connection, that it's not going to get from five to ten, that would be the goal. Ms. Overholt and I have been exploring some other ideas, lunch club is one. And so we know the eighty-seven students that we have this year already, some of them will be fifth graders graduating, but I'm sure we're going to get some second graders coming over that'll have some attendance concerns. Our goal is to meet with those kids over pizza once a month, just as a hangout, just to talk how's school going, as one more step to build relationships with some of those kids. This will be an idea that will be further discussed with staff, so that's why I get my number four still exploring. But we cannot continue, and this is not an OES problem, this is not an Oxford problem, this is not an Oakland County program problem, this is a nationwide problem since COVID of getting kids to school. But we can't have eighty-seven students who are missing between ten and twenty percent and continue to function and get the touch scores that we want and all of that. And so we really strongly felt that this is something that has to be addressed now. So my hope is that when I come back to you a year from now, I'm going to be sharing some results of this program and I hope that that eighty-seven number is at least reduced. I'm not sure if we're going to get down to the fifteen that we would have had pre-COVID, but if we can get that eighty-seven even halved, I will do a cartwheel in front of the board if we can hit that number. So we're either going to have something to look forward to or something to have a nightmare about between now and a year from now. But that's our goal is to reduce that number dramatically between now and when you see me in a year. I'm not sure if we're supposed to take questions or not.
Start with Mike.
Jeff, I was just wondering, thank you for the update. I was wondering, you mentioned as far as kids graduating, the check-in checkout program, and if they remain graduated, then they get to, they get to be involved in the celebrations after that. Do you have the numbers on who slips, like what percentage of kids slip back into the program?
Two, so two out of the four.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Colleen.
Thanks, Jeff, that was very interesting, great job. I have one question, and I just lost my train of thought. Go ahead, keep going, I'll.
Sure. Go ahead, Amanda.
Thank you very much, that was a great presentation. Couple of questions. When you're talking about the reflect room and you had about, it was about one-third, 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 you know, and feel that it's always positive. Did you solicit feedback for what can be done to improve that in that survey or was it just the one question?
For that survey, the purpose of that survey was to generate conversation. Actually, at our next staff meeting, we're going to be looking at that data as a staff to have further conversation. But we gave the survey first because we wanted our staff meeting conversation to be a little bit more database. And sometimes the people that are willing to share in the survey are not always the ones that'll share a lot. So I do not have that in hand yet, but we have a plan to get that information out.
Oh, great, thank you, thank you. And just one more quick one, I was just curious of your thoughts, there's such a discrepancy, you know, on between third, fourth, and fifth visiting, do you have any reason or ideas as to why or do you think that's pretty similar across other third, fourth, and fifth grade?
I will say, when you look at our behavior challenges across our whole building, it is a third-grade heavy year. It is a little bit more of a challenging group maybe than what we've been accustomed to. And I think if you talk to our colleagues at Daniel Oxford, it's kind of been recognized a little bit along the way. So based on that, it's not tremendously shocking. But what I'll also say is, one of the things that you didn't see, I'm not sure if Bridget Bittner is presenting this to you today or coming in the near future, our OES survey data. When you look at our fourth and fifth grade groups especially, their response even to our bully data was there's almost no bullying happening. The third grade group responded higher in that area as well. And that was students reporting in that piece. And so I do think for whatever reason, it's just as a group, it's maybe a little more challenging than my fourth and fifth graders right now. I don't think it's a trend and I don't think it's fair to say that, I'd love to tell you, yes, we noticed this in third grade and by fifth grade they leave and it's no longer an issue. I don't think it's been anywhere near that consistent of a trend over time, no.
Okay, thank you. And then I just had a question too, on your number of students visiting the reflect room, it said four forty-six, I'm assuming there's probably some duplicates, are you guys paring down to your double attenders?
I had to choose which slides I could present to you tonight. And so we actually, when we talked about some of this at a staff meeting recently, I included that data point. The huge majority, and I don't feel comfortable saying the number right now, but I do feel comfortable saying like seventy percent-ish were one-time visitors. And so yeah, so the two times or the three or more was definitely a much lower number. But don't pull me exactly out of seventy percent, but it was, it was in that general vicinity of a huge majority of one-time visitors. Which is overwhelming.
Mary?
I did, but go ahead. Thank you so much, Jeff, for the presentation. I really appreciate that you saw where there was an issue, you know, with the attendance and looked for a way to solve that. It is, it is a really big problem, as you said, I've seen similar data. So I'm looking forward to seeing how, how the, how the, I don't want to say experiment, but how the pilot works out as you, as you, you're taking the process that has already been beneficial somewhere else and recognizing this is a challenge. So thank you for, thank you for being a risk taker.
Fingers are crossed, I appreciate it.
Okay, got it now. Is there going to be a component, because these kids are so young, with some kind of parenting help? I know Parent University hasn't been a huge success, but I think that it's probably really important for parents to understand, you know, how it, your kid's attendance really builds on, or your kid's success really builds on their attendance and, you know, what happens as it matriculates out.
So by asking me that question, you're going to make me sort of reveal something and I'm just going to because I feel like I should since I was asked. We are going to ask for parent permission to be part of the check-in checkout and part of the lunch club. And what that's going to allow us to do is, one, is going to open some communication with the parents. But the other thing that it's going to do is when kids have ongoing attendance issues, we do send them to our local youth assistance. There are times when we involve our truancy officer. But what we're also going to be able to include now when we reach out to those groups are whether or not a family chose to participate in the programs that we're offering. And so it would be certainly to the family's benefit to be able to say yes, that they made the choice to participate. I think that both of those organizations will look more favorably on that type of response. I do not have the letter ready for this, we're looking at next year, but that's going to be a component where the parents are going to have to sign off that they understand why their child is participating or why they have been invited to participate. And I think that little bit of leverage with the truancy officer and with youth assistance will be helpful in some of these cases.
Anything else?
I do have a, more of a comment, just in general, almost a challenge to the district and the board. We've gotten, I mean, since you mentioned the third graders, class of twenty thirty-three, I believe. And, I mean, it's the easiest way to talk about it, right? Because they'll always be class of twenty thirty-three. But we've, I've heard both across the district as well as across the county, talking to people and that's, I think, when COVID hit, that's the, that's the most challenging class right now. And I don't know, I don't know what that means as far as supports that need are required. But just kind of in general, I think we should look at, at how to try to get that class back caught up because I think it just hit at some of their real basic development years as far as, as far as school is concerned. And so, yeah, it's just that.
And I think the other piece we've done, Mr. Wood, is not only with the academic side of things, I think it also carries over into the socialization and some of those pieces. So I think it truly is the whole child in that age group that were facing a few more challenges than what we're used to with, for sure.
I think what you, I know what you've heard from Jeff tonight is a really, a great example of how a building has come together around a common problem and created their own solutions. I know that through Cabinet and through Anita and Steve's work with all of the principals in all of the buildings, the You Matter campaign began this year and as you know, that was a whole campaign around saying, you matter and you being with us matters, so let's, let's get you back to school. Each building in their continuous improvement plans that they've written, each building as they have set goals for themselves, have in some way, shape, or form been approaching the attendance issue. And now that Jeff has opened and piqued your curiosity, I'm going to ask Anita and Steve to maybe pull together for you kind of a summary of, or maybe you could do it tonight, Anita, that would, there you have it, a summary of kind of where we're going. Yes, I know it.
Well, I can't give you a summary, but I will say that actually, for instructional, we have an elementary instructional team and all of our buildings' attendance is being pulled in a very similar way, really obviously because Jeff started inquiring and we wanted to look at it a different way. But I wanted to add to Colleen's question, one of the things Jeff and I also talked about is for the parents, sometimes just hearing ten days' absence doesn't have the same effect as sixty hours of missed instruction. So part of the conversation is not just you missed this many days, because it's not just about truancy. Most of the kids at elementary, it's an excused absence, they were sick or they went on a vacation and they're not really just blowing school off, right? But it's about absenteeism and its impact on teaching and learning. And so that's going to be our approach and part of the conversation Jeff and I have had is how do we take it beyond the days and actually talk about how much instruction is being missed? Because even if you're a very strong performer, which sometimes... Because even if you're a very strong performer, which sometimes parents say, they're going to be fine, they're really strong at school, but it does add up. So tomorrow, we're actually beginning that at elementary, each school will get their data, again, very similar to the chart that Jeff presented. Jeff's going to share what they're doing as a school, so the other schools to hear, and they're going to have, actually in the afternoon, they're looking at their OVADAS data and then their attendance data. So more to come, and then we'll have to work on that with secondary as well. But I just thought I'd take that for you, safe teching tomorrow.
All right. Thanks again, Jeff.
Thank you.
It's a great presentation.
I can't wait to see the score update.
Item number four on the agenda was scheduled public comment for agenda items only, I don't think we had any, right, Colleen? Nope, okay. Moving on to number five, consent agenda. We have several minutes, because we've been meeting a lot lately, and then we have our bills payable and human resources updates. Can I get motion? Amanda?
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support? Mary? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Superintendent's report, Dr. Markovich.
Yeah, two items. As you know, we had a accidental fire at the Drainer Road property. And that is still in process of being investigated, so I'd just like to update you a little bit on where we at with all of that. So we have had both the, first of all, let me say that fortunately, the way that building is constructed and with the fire doors and firewalls that were in place, the fire began in the roof, which is above a very large community open space room. It is one big room with very high ceilings. It is not any first or second floor like the rest of the building. And everything that was built within that contained the fire to that large room. The exterior and the frame, much of the frame of that room is still in place. A large portion of the roof is still in place, but there are repairs, of course, that need to be done before that room could possibly be occupied. In terms of the rest of the building, there's a little bit of water damage in the basement, and there is smoke damage in the rest of the rooms. And if you recall, that building had two wings plus the large meeting room. And in one wing, we had loft, in the loft program in the lower level, we had the bridges program and elementary OVA program at the second level. In the other wing, we also had the secondary, and we had bridges, did I say bridges? We had bridges and elementary OVA in that level. And then we had technology there as well, and then secondary OVA and some offices. So those are the programs we were going to move there, OVA, bridges, loft, and combine our technologies so we could have some collaboration across the district rather than having them separated out. We should be able to start working in those buildings. Right now, the dehumidifiers have been running for the water issues, the air purifiers have begun running. As soon as the inspections are done and they allow us to enter that section of the building, we'll be able to work on all of the smoke damage things. So ceiling tiles will probably have to be replaced because they're very porous, the painted walls will need a treatment, it's kind of a washing treatment that gets rid of the smoke, there's other things. But we'll be able to probably get that up to speed, we're hoping, by July. You know, we were going to hopefully have a May opening, loft wanted to move in May, all the other programs wanted to move over the summer anyway. And now we won't be able to do the early move, but we are hoping, our goal is to still let those programs move into that section of the building over the summer, July, and be ready for school to start next year. In terms of the large space that is going to have to go under some reconstruction and remodeling, if that can't get done by July or August, it's not a space that was critical for the programs that were going to be on the other side of that room. It's a space that can still be under construction while those programs are running. In terms of the investigation that's going on, the fire department has had their investigator out, the insurance company has had its investigator out. Neither of those two investigators, they are, it was an accidental fire, it was some sort of electrical fire. They are not able on their own to come with the exact cause of the electrical fire. They have hired an electrical engineer who is going to be at Drainer this Thursday, and he is going to walk the building with those other two inspectors and do a further look around all the things that could have impacted the electrical event and come up with a cause. So we have to wait for that particular inspection to be done before we'll know for sure. Do you have any questions about that, other than what I've said? Fortunately, no one was hurt. Fortunately, things can be replaced, and fortunately, the integrity of the building was sound enough that we are not looking, we're looking at repairs that are going to be feasible to get done. So, that's good. The second up-
No, I do, now that electrical engineer, will he be, like, I guess, clearing the rest of the building as well?
No, his purpose for coming there, well, is to determine the cause of that fire. I think they're calling it electrical forensic audit of some sort.
Real quick, so before we determine the cause and which insurance company, are we able to start repairs before that process?
Yes, they have said, well, not on the chapel, the chapel, or which is now going to become the large community room, that's an issue that's got to be resolved. We don't know when until the investigation is final. But everyone who's been in that building and has looked at the rest of the building has said, as soon as that is resolved, and they will allow us into the rest of the building to start the work there. And we're hoping that after this Thursday, resolution will come sooner and we'll be able to start there.
Okay, thank you.
The other update I have is, we had a safety forum in this very room last night. We had about 27 people attended, we had a very large panel. I thanks the board members who were able to make it last night, thank you very much. I have given you an agenda that we had at that meeting, and also a few of the handouts we used. The format of the meeting was to introduce those people who contribute to our safety and security. And those people that contribute are, obviously, our Fortis Group, who brings in our human security, our parent subcommittee on safety, our district subcommittee on safety, our SROs, of course, are a big part, our representatives to the safety committee, Mike and James, are a big part, they were with us. And the panel, I think, was very helpful in getting information out to the audience. We also made some presentations, and in the packet I've given you on the green and blue sheets, you'll see some of the things that we linked folks to. And the other thing we linked them to, as you know, as you can see from the multicolored chart, and I know we've talked about this before, we have two kinds of tips that come from us, the tips that come from OK2Say, which is the Michigan State Police organization, and so it starts as a police report and usually continues as a police report. And then we have those threats that come to us from our own people, they're internal, and we put those threats through a screening process, and then eventually, as is needed, a threat assessment process. Our communication in those two different scenarios differs in that when we communicate about those things that come to us and there's no police investigation involved, we have typically been able to communicate more details. A threat was heard on the bus, it involved, you know, a picture depiction of something, we are able to give those details. We were able to say the police have already cleared for weapons, we're able to say we're screening and/or we're threat assessing, and we're able to say, you know, when we finish the process, we'll let you know. And parents have been informed and the students involved are not in school yet. And when it's over, we're able to say, this is what happened, and the students involved have a safety plan and are being dealt with in terms of our code of conduct. When it's a police investigation, however, we have been cooperating with the police in that the details that we give cannot be details that impact their investigation. So the two communications are different, and that's been causing concern in the community. So what we did is, through the green sheet, we linked the community members to templates that we use for these communications, and we also gave them a Google form, and we're asking them to send us their ideas, opinions, concerns, what other things it is they really feel they need to know. And then, especially on the OK2Say side, we'll go back and we'll work again with the police and see if we can improve those in any extent. So we've got a little interactive activity going on that we hope will bring us some information. We also will summarize the meeting, we'll summarize the presentations we gave, because it was not televised. We will also, we have recorded all the questions that were asked, and we will do an FAQ on those things, and we'll get that posted on the website, I'm hoping Allison, within a week, if we can, and she's nodding her head. So I know it's her office that will be doing most of that. So that's how that went, and you wanted a report, because I know everybody couldn't be there, and that's the report.
Any questions for Vicky? All right. Moving on to the agenda, we did have a field trip request that came to us at our last regular board meeting, that is up for approval for the OHS BPA. Colleen?
Move to approve the Oxford High BPA field trip request to BPA National Leadership Conference, May 10th through the 14th, 2024, in Chicago, Illinois.
Drive support? Amanda? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving down to item number eight on the agenda is our unscheduled public comment. Kelly's going to bring me the cards, but if you're speaking tonight, there'll be lights on the table, you'll get three minutes, it will flash yellow before your three minutes are up, and then it will buzz and a red light will come on. And then we will move on to the next individual that's scheduled to speak.
I have no idea. I watched him push above the air.
Mike is our subsecretary for a moment, so he's trying to get the device figured out, so give him just a moment.
So like three minutes? Or I can use my phone. No, he doesn't have it.
Good evening. I'd like to start by acknowledging and thanking 42 Strong at the conclusion of their second year of the program, and thank all volunteers and their leadership for serving over 400 Oxford students this year. Tate Meyer's legacy endures through the growth and companionship gained by local children and teenagers, and we're all indebted to his family for this effort. I'd like to thank the district for hosting the safety forum last night. Clearly, a lot of work went into it, so there was helpful information that was shared. I do want to turn our attention specifically to the parent safety committee, who clarified their role and their unique skills in the area of safety and security. So since there seems to be a willingness to potentially expand the parent safety committee, I personally encourage the board to prioritize this for our new permanent superintendent when she comes on board, expanding the parent safety committee. I view this as an opportunity to include all parents who desire to contribute to a safer school environment. So like, even if they don't have a specialized skill set, like they're not in law enforcement or something, they might still be able to share their time and talents. And one idea would be, if we're feeling like we're not sure the best approach to take or how to do it, perhaps we can call upon Homeland Security. I think they have a regional office and they consult with school districts, and we can ask for some advice for them on how to best achieve the goal of including all voices, which would therefore improve safety for all of our students and staff. So thanks for considering.
Thank you. Mark Gillum?
So I just want to say thank you to the staff and teachers that are not named here today. We appreciate you and your work with our children, we love you very much. After attending the school safety forum last night, I understand why this leadership team refused to make the event public. We're a public school, why wouldn't you make it public? And I feel like that's a failure of the board's leadership to direct your employee, Vicky, to make that happen. So much inaccurate information provided by Vicky and Allison Wilmann and this board, including Mary Hanser, Heather Schaefer, our last two board members representing the board from November 30th and the needless murders of Tate Meyer, Madison Baldwin, Justin Schilling, and Hannah St. Juliana, as defined in the board's $3 million report. This community is standing with the victims' families to hold the board and school accountable for their fatal mistakes and continued denial, leaving our community vulnerable. Why is Stephen Wolf and Jim Rourke and Pam Fine still employed, considering their roles leading up to November 30th tragedy? The administration continues placing staff above the needs of our children and students for healing and safety. An issue with Sheriff Bouchard and the last bomb threat that we had, the threat came into the schools at 7:05, but the school didn't find out until 7:59. And the communication between parents didn't come to the school until after 10 o'clock, and Mike Bouchard, our sheriff, said, communication, any communication to the students and parents come from the school, we have no contact information, and it's at their discretion as well as the closing of the school or remaining open. And he sent that to me February 27th at 10:28 PM. So it's your discretion when you notify the parents that there's a threat at the school, to leave the parents out of the loop is inappropriate. At last night's meeting, Vicky was going to discuss about the threat assessment system GAGL for our emails, and why it's only activated on the students' emails and not the staff emails, which would explain the delay in finding out the threat. Again, the weapons screening system EVOLVE is supposed to be used with a threshold of over 500 people, that's not true. You turn it on for groups smaller than 50, and I was just at an event last weekend where you left it off for a group larger than 500. DRIFTnet was presented as a new weapons detection system a year ago, but Allison and Vicky, they rolled that out to our community and did not do their due diligence to indicate that they can't even get the system active. Why this team, with this team led by Aaron Reese and Vicky Markovich, our finances are in distress, buildings are burning, trust is broken, and failures continue mounting at the expense of our students and community. If you want to exonerate yourself, write a public letter inviting our state attorney general and the Department of Justice to initiate an investigation so we can learn about the failures and prevent future tragedy.
Kevin Kedrich?
I come tonight to speak about Oxford High School wrestling. First and foremost, congratulations to those all-state athletes recognized earlier. Those are amazing accomplishments for these exceptional athletes, but they didn't do this in a vacuum. They were coached very well to accomplish that goal. It has been brought to my attention that either the high school or the district are contemplating making a change in the head coach's position. Since I have not seen a formal announcement from the athletic director's office or seen a job posting from the district anywhere, I'm hopeful that this is not a final decision. I followed this program very closely since 2006, and I've followed high school wrestling around the state since 1998. I've had encounters with countless programs and coaches from all around the state, and I can say without hesitation that Coach Ross Wingert is excellent for the Oxford wrestling program and as a representative for our district. I define a program as the athletes, the coaches, and the families who surround them. I've said a million times to anyone who would listen that Oxford has the best wrestling program in the state. Coach Wingert cares tremendously about this program and the athletes, while having some of the best success in the OAA, and I cannot fathom- I'm not sure who decides this stuff or what has brought the school or the district to this decision, but if there's a way to change this course and right this ship, please consider it. Thanks for your time and the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to the agenda, number nine is scheduled activities. We do have a conversation over coffee Thursday at Leonard Elementary, starts at six o'clock. I believe it's myself, who's all going? You and you? All right. Me, Mike, and Amanda. All right. Any administrative clarification? Any final board comments?
I was not able to attend the safety forum because I was at the Oxford Library last night at the art show for all of our preschoolers, and gosh, was that just the greatest art show. So shout out to everybody who put that, excuse me, who put that together. It was just amazing, the the types of art and the artists that we are exposing our preschoolers to. It was just, it was amazing. They even had, I can't remember their name now, but the artist who did the block colors that some of you might remember, I always thought of as the Partridge Family, you know, those colors, the black and red. And it was just, it was just fantastic, just the opportunity for the little, little ones to have their artwork on display, and there was a waiting line to get in. It was just, it was, it was just amazing. So congratulations, I believe. That was the second annual. I'm looking forward to the next one.
I have a couple of healthkeeping things I wanted to go over. Unfortunately, James and Heather aren't here, so hopefully they're watching at home so they can get up to speed because I would like to get a governance committee meeting on the books for next month. We did have a policy meeting this month, and we have one coming up, but for my fellow policy members. Vicky and I had another meeting today for a couple hours going over. We're, we are now through the three thousand, so it has been a a big undertaking. So for the fellow policy members, we will be emailing you board documents that have our proposed changes to go to policy committee and then to the full board. So keep a lookout for that and know that we are through the three thousand. So if you haven't perused that, that's where we're at. And then it has also brought up a lot of things for governance. So we have a new long list for governance committee, so I'd like to get that for next month as well. And also, Mary and I attended the parliamentary procedure workshop at OCSBA, and that was, that went very well. And so I would also like to share those things with governance. There you go. Just an update there.
Kelly, can you help us schedule?
Her calendars can be a little crazy, especially going through May and graduation season, so. All right. Okay. All right. Eight oh five, meeting adjourned. Thank you.